There you go. Go ahead before I call the meeting into order, Don, or this is after?
Yeah, we have a quorum, but I'd like to confirm that we don't yet have Alderman Shane Cone. Is that true? Chaney, you on the call yet? I know you had a conflict for a bit.
I'm not showing him.
All right, but we do have a quorum, so we can proceed, but we'll change the order of the agenda. And Scott, have you identified that Andrea has Zach Wilson available to us?
He's in here. I see Zachary's iPhone. That's probably him.
I'm here.
Yeah.
Okay, so in lieu of Alderman Coder, excuse me, Alderman Shane, expect to be a little bit late.
Okay.
Let's call the meeting to order, do the roll call. If Shane's not with us, but we have a quorum, we'll proceed with the redevelopment plan before we do the Dutch Town SUD.
All right, thanks, Don, and I do see somebody else joining. At this point, I do want to call the order, the meeting to order. With that, David, would you call the roll, please?
All right, Alderman Coder.
Here.
Alderman Cone, not present yet. Commissioner Benton, not present. Commissioner Boaz.
Present.
Commissioner Bradley.
Present.
Commissioner Peoples.
Present.
Commissioner Goodman.
Present.
Commissioner Pfeffer.
Present.
And Sheriff Strather.
Present.
And you have a quorum?
All right, thank you very much. With that, the first order of business is the approval of the minutes. They were sent out in your packet. I've read them. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as they're presented.
Move to approve, Commissioner Boaz.
It's been moved by Commissioner Boaz. Do I have a second?
Second, Commissioner Peoples.
Because I have a move by Commissioner Boaz, a second by Commissioner Peoples. Call for vote, please.
Alderman Coder.
Abstain.
Commissioner Boaz.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Abstain.
Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Commissioner Goodman.
Aye.
Commissioner Pfeffer.
Aye.
Sheriff Strather.
Aye.
And the motion passes with five voting, aye.
And Mr. Chairman, I think we ought to take a moment to announce that in our representation on the Planning Commission, we have two aldermatic committees that are represented by being able to send either their chairman or a designated, those being the Transportation Committee, which Shane Cone is the chairman of. And the most recent chairman for the HUDs Committee has resigned being an alderman. The vice chairman is Jack Coder, and he's stepping in tonight as the representative for the HUDs Committee. Thanks, Alderman Coder, for joining us.
Happy to do it. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Alderman Coder, and welcome. You'll see, hopefully, we are good stewards of your time and your skill set. With that, the first presentation is going to be the Chapter 99 blighting study, because I don't see Alderman Cone on the line yet. So we'll do that. And who's presenting the 99?
Andrea.
Okay, Andrea, well, welcome. I will ask why you're presenting if you would take off your mask, simply so we can hear you. And at that point, once you're ready to put it back, once you're finished, you can put it back on.
Okay. All right, good evening, all. This evening, I am presenting the Chapter 99 Blighting Study and Redevelopment Plan for the site containing the Railway Exchange Building. The plan covers two blocks totaling 3.29 acres in the downtown neighborhood between North Sixth Street and North Seventh Street, with Locust Street as the northern boundary and Pine Street as the southern boundary. The site is within the adopted Design Downtown St. Louis Neighborhood Plan, the adopted plan. And the plan provides, the blighting study and redevelopment plan, provides for the use of acquisition of the property, of property by eminent domain, except for 622 Olive Street, and is recommended to be supported by up to 20 years tax abatement based on 95% of assessed value of improvements. The site consists of three commercial buildings, a parking lot, and a parking garage, all of which are currently vacant. The site also contains the 21-story high-rise Railway Exchange Building, which was built in 1914. The site is within a specialty mixed-use area of the Strategic Land Use Plan. The blighting study and redevelopment plan applies urban design and building and street regulations from the adopted Design Downtown St. Louis Neighborhood Plan. And failure to meet these requirements may result in a suspension of tax abatement. Last one. The proposed blighting and redevelopment plan is in conformity with the Strategic Land Use Plan and the Design Downtown St. Louis Neighborhood Plan, and PDA recommends approval of the proposed blighting and redevelopment plan. And this evening, we have Zach Wilson, Senior Manager of Incentives, to answer questions.
All right, thank you very much. With that, let me be sure, for those that are not aware, we will be having a public hearing on this one.
No.
No, we won't be having a public hearing on this one. It's on the other one. But with that, we do recognize that our purpose is to simply approve the blighting study. In lieu of all that is going in, I think we just need to be sure what our ask is of this commission. With that, I started simply going by the list of aldermen, well, members, and asking for questions. So Alderman Coder, you'll be the first that I'll ask in a moment if you have any questions, and I'll move down the list as we call it, the roll.
In this case, I think I'd like to give a little cursor preview. One, thanks Andrea for doing this presentation. It's the first one she's done as a redevelopment plan. As you know, in your packet, the documentation is extensive, and we have that. The second thing I will say is Zach is available. I think we may ask him questions. He's representing the drafting of the redevelopment plan by L.C.R.A. There's not a developer, so he'll be on deck for that. And in this parlance of a Chapter 99, it's, we're approving a Chapter 99 which is consisting of a blighting study and a redevelopment plan. So what we're asking the Planning Commission to do is, as Andrea said, we're reviewing it and comparing it with these adopted plans, and staff is making a recommendation. So just as a, making sure we have that defined, so that it's a blighting study and redevelopment plan that we're moving from the Planning Commission with a recommendation to go to the Board of Aldermen. With that, the, Jack Coder is representing HUDs. And Jack, I think this property is also in your aldermatic district, so you're up first. No pressure.
Yes, it is. You know, I'm obviously very familiar with the properties in question, and I'm supportive of passing this out tonight. I'm sure, you know, it will be a great discussion at the Board of Aldermen, and I'm hopeful we can find a legitimate developer to tackle this massive project in the middle of downtown. So it has my full support.
Thank you, Alderman Coder. I do not yet see Alderman Cone on. With that, is Commissioner Benton on? I do not see him showing.
He's in excused absence tonight.
Oh, he is, okay. All right, Commissioner Boaz, any questions?
I don't have any specific questions. Glad to see this moving forward.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Bradley, any questions?
No questions. Looks like a good project. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Peoples, any questions?
No questions. Very good project.
Thank you, Commissioner Peoples. Commissioner Goodman, any?
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Pfeffer.
No questions, but important project. We need to bring these downtown behemoths back to life in order to revitalize our downtown, and excited to see it moving forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. Chair has no questions at that. With the staff, Zach, is there anything that you need to add to that before we call for the vote?
No, I think Andrea covered everything, but thank you for inviting me to the Planning Commission.
All right, Andrea, what I would ask that you do is simply read the recommendation once again for the record.
Okay, the proposed blighting and redevelopment plan, oh, PDA recommends approval of the proposed blighting and redevelopment plan.
Okay, the Commission advised, I'm just trying to recommend the action here. The approval for it to go to the Board of Aldermen in the City of St. Louis. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Pfeffer, seconded by Commissioner, I believe that was.
Boaz.
Oh, Commissioner Boaz, thank you. Call for vote, please.
Alderman Coder.
Aye.
Commissioner Boaz.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Commissioner Goodman.
Aye.
Commissioner Pfeffer.
Aye.
Sheriff Strather.
Aye.
And the motion passes with all present voting, yes.
Chairman Cone is here. I'm an aye. Our chairman, Commissioner.
Alderman Commissioner, you are right on time, Commissioner, welcome. With that, the next item of business, we'll have a public, a public hearing after the presentation. And Jonathan, I think, is the one presenting that item.
He is.
So Jonathan, you're up.
Thank you, Chair.
And Jonathan, you should mention that a member of the zoning staff is also here to assist.
Yes, so good evening. My name is Jonathan Roper, Senior Planner with a planning and urban design agency. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the Dutch Town SUD, PDA 01522 SUD. Also, we do have Terrell with us from the zoning office. And there also should be on the line during the public hearing portion, members who participated in addition to myself in this, including the Dutch Town Main Streets or the Dutch Town South Community Corporation. But the first item is a special use district, which, special use districts, they're, the enabling legislation by the City of St. Louis calls for, allows for a zoning overlay to be created to assist in the implementation of an adopted city plan. And it also could respond to a well-defined health, safety, moral, or general welfare problems that a specific area is seeing. And it must be also at least two contiguous acres. And it primarily focuses on commercial corridors, but it would also consider residentially zoned parcels as well in a district if it also responds to, if the SUD helps in responding to the issues that are being experienced in the residential or it further is a plan. The proposed boundaries of the special use district, it's 91 acres along the commercial corridors of South Grand, Merrimack, and Virginia Avenue. Primarily is within the Dutch Town neighborhood. However, it also extends into the Mount Pleasant and Carron de Let neighborhoods as well. Roughly 27,000 people reside in the three neighborhoods mentioned, and this includes a population of 6,700 youth, which the, about 4,000 of those, the, it's on the Dutch Town, which is the highest of any neighborhood in the City of St. Louis. The area is primarily Zone F Neighborhood Commercial. That's the pink you see on the right map on the screen. But there's also some two family dwellings as well, and also one area for the E Multiple Family Dwelling District as well. The area has multiple sloop designations. This slide and the next few slides will show the different sloop categories that cover this area, along with kind of describing on a slide what the sloop is envisioning for the area, as well as what is actually the current land use activities are going on there. So in this case, here on this screen, this shows the neighborhood preservation areas, as you see in most of the yellow on the screen, where it's the primary residential district, but it also allows for those residential, I'm sorry, commercial uses that are intertwined with it, maybe corner commercial that serves the immediate needs of the neighborhood, usually has very light parking to it. In our sloop document, you could see that, not on the screen, but in our sloop document, for guidance, we have Crown Candy as the image listed. So if you could imagine a Crown Candy with the, you know, commercials, or I'm sorry, the residential kind of surrounding in different areas. If you imagine what you see on the screen here with a lot of the mixed-use buildings or commercial that is right adjacent to residential, as well as, I do want to point out, one of the issues that we'll document and talk about later are the number of commercial properties that are adjacent to active residential, which is an issue in the district. Sloop looks at the neighborhood commercial areas, which serve more than just the immediate neighborhood's desires and needs, but also adjacent neighborhoods as well. This is the second primary, primary category for the sloop. That's outlined in pink here. And as you can see, some of the existing buildings that are designated as neighborhood commercial, the properties that are either partially vacant, boarded. You could see what's on the left middle is the recently vacant historic landmark building, the Feasting Fox, over 100 years old, and that's vacant. And actually, during this time with the SUD, there was a window broken on Grand. So one of the points about pointing all of these buildings outers, once they start going vacant, then it goes downhill pretty fast. So that's one of the things we also like the SUD to respond to is the vacancy as well. And I'll point your direction to the bottom right-hand corner, where that's an existing retail business, where the, there's a lot of rubbish around the dumpster, and that seems to be a recurring issue. So we also, later on this SUD, tackle refuge enclosures and dumpsters as well. Next slide, please. The third sloop category that we want to point out to you, while there are others, such as neighborhood development area, which you see in the lower orange, the only orange piece on the screen, which is a vacant piece of land. But this right here points out the opportunity area piece, which is the former Cleveland High School site. That would vacant, and since it went vacant, and I believe it was, it's noted in your packet, I believe, around 2006 or so, it has sat, and now these pictures were taken recently, where you see a number of windows broken, graffiti. And there's a big site that's just strictly vacant at this point. It actually makes a number one, because it's the number one site that we need to develop in Dutch Town. So, but this is included also, not only under the sloop as an opportunity area, but also as under the Chapter 99 that was passed. That call for tax abatement on its site and blighted it as well. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned before, there are a number of planning items. I mentioned the redevelopment plan, the Chapter 99 that was passed by the city in 2019. That you could see in the gray lines that go from, start at the bottom left and go up to the top right. There's, this area is also covered in the other stripes by the Gravely Jefferson Historics Neighborhood Plan, a plan that was adopted by the City of St. Louis Planning Commission. And also the Dutch Town Community Improvement District, as you see in the light blue that covers much of the special use district's proposed boundaries. Slide, please. And in looking at what these different plans call for, actually, go back one real quick, I'm sorry. The Chapter 99 will note also, it says Cleveland High School in the middle of the SUD, because the Chapter 99 not only covers the places along Virginia, but Osceola, but also the Cleveland High School site, and it actually specifically says giving multiple or maximum kind of abatement for the Cleveland High School site. Next slide, please. The Gravely Jefferson Historics Neighborhood Plan, again, adopted by the Planning Commission. It noted several recommendations. This goes from stuff about health, housing, employment, streets, transit. So there's a number of recommendations that are referenced in your resolution, but also on the screen, just to name a few. It even notes to, in the plan, to create a special use district for lib work, which is being addressed, increase the tree canopy. Consider this whole area a transit-oriented development area where it pushes more transit routes. And I know there are two lines that are in the area that serve the special use district right now. Different mechanisms to how we can support crime prevention through environmental design, and how that's accomplished, and a number of other items here. There's even to support local artists, and getting up a food ecosystem, lowering substance abuse uses, including consumption of tobaccos in there as well. So the SUD looks to respond to all these items and more. The, the staff has done a lot of analysis in the area for a number of items that would support not only the findings of the SUD, but the recommendations. And a lot of these are based upon what was found, such as, go to the next slide, please. And all these figures and maps are in your resolution as well. But we found that in the area, like mentioned before, with a youth population of 6,700 in the three areas, which again, Dutch Town is the highest youth population in the city. There are a lot of different schools, either libraries, churches, or different use, use types that are more youth-friendly and related. But we also found that with the land use, so within the area, we did take a parcel-by-parcel analysis of what the uses are going on in the area, and we did find, along with the Dutch Town Main Streets, Dutch Town Main Streets, they, there's a consultant with the Missouri Main Streets that did a study, and they found leakages in the area of restaurants and other types of businesses that with the population that you have in the district, it could support more. So there are several businesses that are lacking. Also, this area has, is in different economic empowerment zones, such as the opportunity zone or the HUD qualified census tracts. We also found that of the around 426 parcels in the area, that one in five had some type of ground floor vacancy. That includes residential, commercial, but one in five parcels. Different uses could tend to be more predatory towards either the people, youth in the area, and also might have then not only predatory, but negative, negative impacts on them as well. Some other areas, just because not only due to being about over half these structures in the area are over 100 years old, and about 76% or are about 80 years old. So, or, or higher. So, meaning that once you put the historic side along with the number three there, which the opportunity area is the HUD qualified census tracts, it becomes a little bit more difficult because you're at an economic loss or disadvantage. A lot of the parcels in the district are actually have a small square footage. So around at least a third of the parcels are under about 3,500 square feet or less. So it could, you know, and trying to comply with today's zoning standards, it might be a little bit more difficult because you don't have as much space. There's a number of other things, including graffiti, broken windows, broken walls, illegal dumping, a lot of different trash that, that happens in the area. And finally, that the three neighborhoods together over the last, since January 1, 2027, through sometime in May, or just last month, the area has seen over 100 homicides. I believe the report, unfortunately, I believe it says 200. That is a mistake. I want to correct in the report. It's not 200 homicides. Like the report mentioned, it is 100 on there. Right? Do you want to make that distinction on there? And looking at the SUD, we also look at areas that are, in considering what residentially zoned parcels, they need to either be part of pursuing that plan or, and/or responding to documented issues. So in this case, here are, here's an exhibit of the four areas of residentially B-zoned parcels. And what this analysis finds is that, one is the Gravely Jefferson Plan does call for more lib workspace. Two, the, these parcels do exist either along commercial corridors of South Grand, Merrimack, or Virginia, and they are deeply intertwined with existing commercial and residential, as we've seen on the slides prior to this, where you had vacant commercial along next to housing. On the screen, also, on the four maps, you see the dots represent different CSB calls over the years. Also highlighted in different spots, a number of these blocks, like the one you see in the image, a lot of these, a lot of the uses actually are existing commercial, and the B2 family district already. So they do incorporate either mid-block in some cases, or corner commercial. And even worse than, well, it's fine to have it, but what is worse about it is that in a B2 family, you have existing vacant and chronically vacant commercial there, as is found there as well. Also, these properties are also covered with the plans, the Chapter 99, and the Community Improvement District. Just pause here for a second, and I just want to think and just recognize that two partners in this process, the Dutch Town Main Streets and the Dutch Town South Community Corporation, just by name, you know, Nate Lindsay and Anna McCaskill, have been just wonderful in this process. So I want to thank them, and hopefully during the public hearing that if they would like to say some words, they weren't happy to. But, and getting into what informed this plan from the neighborhood, next slide, please. So we start out with, so in addition to the extensive public engagement that happened through the Gravely Jefferson Historics Neighborhood Plan, and building upon those recommendations from the community, there was also additional public outreach from different meetings, pop-ups, institutions, meetings with local institutions or community organizations. There was an online survey, and we do also have, abide by the 15-day public hearing notice, as well as we did post all blocks, all blocks in the SUD with a public hearing notice at least 15 days prior to this meeting. And we had a number of conversations, and even more conversations as the postings went on, and people saw, they stopped and talked, and told them what was going on, and seemed like, yeah, they're ready for the vacancy to be reduced. So they seem to be really for it. So getting into the, what is actually in the, and being recommended in the SUD to respond to the number of health, safety, welfare issues, or in trying to further the the Gravely Jefferson Neighborhood Plan or the Chapter 99 Plan, there are 16 uses that would be permitted in just this geographical area that you see on the screen. A number of these are either found to be items that are lacking in the area, especially for an area that can serve, you know, 27,000 plus the visitors that they have. In the Gravely Jefferson Plan, youth-oriented, or just items that the neighborhood, so, yeah, let's, we really need to look at reduce the vacancy in the area, and doing a lot of these items would definitely do that. Also noting the Gravely Jefferson Plan, for example, one of the items to note are to try to bring up more desired businesses to increase the, bring more neighborhood services and amenities to increase that housing demand as well. So here's a number of items on the screen that you see here. This includes stuff like art galleries and gift shops, to even trying to get that grocery store that is, you know, large grocery store that's so coveted that we want here. Even restaurants, too. During this process and throughout COVID, three restaurants in the district closed their doors, including the Feasting Fox and another restaurant catty corner to it. So as noted, it's already difficult enough when you have an historic building that's a little bit old and somewhat of economically, you know, it's in the HUD qualified census tract. So we want to try to lessen the vacancy, and it already had a window that's been broken out and covered. So we want to, you know, put more restaurants in this, this district immediately for the residents. There are some items that are, look to be switched to either conditional, and either those were either permitted in the different districts and are to be switched to conditional to provide a conditional use hearing, to give neighbors more voice in the process. Or there are some items that are bolded in the blue, like candle manufacturers or glass bowling shops, that could fit in the existing district, however, under certain conditions that the neighborhood would want to discuss. There's, I do also want to highlight the grocery store. So one of the items that we did add in here, grocery stores that do not comply with permitted. There's, I do also want to highlight the grocery stores. So one of the items that we did add in here, grocery stores that do not comply with permitted grocery stores. So there is a want not only for the Gravely Jefferson Neighborhood Plan, but also due to the number of youth that we have in the area and yet walkable neighborhood environment. There are the, can you go back one slide? I'm sorry. Okay, yeah. So grocery stores, they look to permit those that either have some type of they have, they do not sell tobacco, but they do sell hot or cold items, prepared fruit items, baked goods is what they're looking to what they're looking to pursue. So that's the language that is recommended in this bill. And one more slide. The prohibited uses in the special use district either have some documented existing issues, recommendations that are Gravely Jefferson Neighborhood Plan, or just fit into less of what the plan is trying to pursue. So for example, look at the public storage facilities and warehouses. Those two are very auto centric uses that are very inactive storefronts. For example, for either of those two, you would usually bring your vehicle, you would let up your vehicle to drop it off to a public storage facility site. So that's an auto oriented use and then people leave. It's really not active. And the between the number of storefronts that are inactive, we are trying to in this plan activate the commercial corridors. Also, some items that motor fuel pump stations, for example, and they exist in the district and they are available in the surrounding area. So there's no shortage. What this would do is this would actually limit any new gas station or motor fuel pumping stations from going into the area. And it has always been documented that there's been a number of issues in the area as well as the existing motor fuel pump station at the corner or the, I should say, in general, the corner of Virginia and Bates, where there's been multiple homicides over the years and issues. So that's why motor fuel pump stations as well are being asked to be prohibited. Now, I will say that all these items will still be grandfathered and if they exist legally today, and they would furthermore be legal, nonconforming with the zoning code. Another item that we tackle, so under the Gravely Jefferson Neighborhood Plan recommendations about the desire for live work as well as the number of the number of residential intertwined with commercial along these commercial corridors. In addition to that, one more item is the lack, well, not lack, there's, there's a number of businesses there. But again, there's a population that has a larger demand. And so we're trying here just to permit just just along Virginia, along Grant and Merrimack loosen some regulations for the home occupations. So in this case, home occupations today throughout the city as a whole would not allow for any advertising outside. This abides by that except for it would allow a sandwich board sign just to be put out, you know, in the grass of the sidewalk and then removed when there's non-business hours. It would allow customers by appointment only. So it's not a walk up business like your, you know, local Starbucks, but you have to you know, if it's just a hair appointment or something, you you make an appointment. So it's supposed to be low traffic like it is today. There's a number of other items that it would permit. And number of items that it would permit. And I would note that what it also does is limits the hours operations from eight AM to eight PM. So currently, there is really no set standard for home occupation and limited hours. So this would do that in this area. The and going through the next few slides, these are outside of the traditional land uses that are just permitted, conditional or prohibited. We also go to what's going on with either the building or the site conditions. In this case, we look at parking minimums to reduce those for parking standards. This is supported by the Gravely Jefferson Neighborhood Plan. It talks about T O D in the area. Also, I will note, Virginia Avenue was a former streetcar street where you could still see the tracks in some places. So this is a highly dense area. So and trying to follow the parking minimum standards and also kind of supporting the small parcel signs along with trying to reduce the number of buildings, especially historic buildings that contribute to the neighborhood that are historic and being then demoed and turned into parking. We are looking to exempt commercial uses from parking standards. So it is, you get what you get that's out there, which is working pretty well, it seems. Residential dwelling units, eight or fewer are also exempt. And also outdoor seating for commercial uses. The if you're doing something that's a new building that's over eight units, so eight, nine, ten units, you also have a reduced parking standard, but there is a parking standard though. So you're not exempt from the minimum, but it is reduced for you. Other regulations include landscape buffers for parking lots. So if you are going to put in a parking lot, then there is a standard that you actually do have trees and bushes. So on the right side, there is an existing parking lot in the district. And if that were a coming in today to if the S U D passed under what's being recommended and they did a parking lot today, it would look more eventually what's on the right, of course, you know, you know, growing time trees. There's on the lights, if you do have parking lots, again, a lot of residential are intertwined in this neighborhood commercial area. So to be respectful, we're looking to actually add language that says full cutoff lights, which looks like in the lighting picture in the bottom left, it goes from a just aura, a light to kind of more excuse me, directed to where people are going to be, as well as wheel stops to help with ADA compatibility or accessibility for sidewalks. And also there's a standard about clean dumpsters areas as there's a number of properties that have a lot of rubbish on their property. Next slide, please. And the district, the height recommendations are noted to change from three stories to six stories and from a fifty foot height minimum to maximum to a seventy foot, seventy five feet maximum, excuse me. This is in part while this is trying not to incentivize the tearing down of existing historic structures, but really more to take advantage of these larger, a few larger opportunity sites that you have, like this one here that it's over an acre at the corner of Chipewa and South Grand where it's for sale and taking advantage of, you know, more heights, more density at strategic locations. It also looks at fences and prohibits barbed wire fences, which does exist throughout the district and limits the height of fences in front of the building line to just four feet. So so for example, that's a six foot or more fence with a barbed wire on top of it that exists right across from the Feasting Fox area, which wouldn't be the most for a walkable family youth environment. So if that's what you're trying to create, that's why we're trying to prohibit it. Other regulations include signage. So on existing windows, part of what's called the crime prevention through environmental design, the visual surveillance where people can actually see into a building that they're going into. And also people can see out just so it might deter someone who thinks they're being covered when they're trying to commit a crime inside. Or people can actually, you know, witness. And so it's just a little bit safer. So these are signage regulations that have been used in the recently passed South Grand S U D and the Bevo S U D as well. And finally, the legal nonconforming uses, which also was in the South Grand S U D, which would reduce the basically all uses are grandfathered, but if they are going out of business and they they discontinued use for more than thirty days, then they would no longer be grandfathered or permitted. This is down from the one year that it is today. And this is to hopefully accomplish more of the goals of the S U D. And at this time, staff will say that we do find that this special use district is fine to meet the criteria of the enabling legislation. We see that this S U D is it's, it shouldn't say proposed rezoning, it's proposed special use district is in conformity with the strategic land use plan, land use designations. Also, the adopted Gravely Jefferson Historic Neighborhood Plan and P D A staff does recommend the commission to initiate and a positive recommendation of the proposed special use district. I also have Ian, that's Terrell, with the zoning office on the line and also a member of the neighborhood here to speak on his behalf as well.
Thank you. You did a yeoman's job on presenting on this one. I would like to first invite Alderman Cone to offer any statements prior to having our public hearing, if you would, at this point.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Let's have the zoning department add anything if they would like at this point.
Okay.
Good.
And then we'll have Alderman Cone come in. So Terrell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. In short, the Dutch Town S U D has been implemented to reduce those uses that are incompatible or detrimental to the area to encourage those uses that enhance and contribute to the viability of the area. And this is done via the enabling legislation for S U Ds as outlined in chapter twenty six point seven three of the zoning ordinance. Now, anything that is not addressed in the S U D overlay will be subject to the regulations of our underlying conventional zoning ordinance. So nothing goes unregulated by implementing this S U D. And a number of hours have been put in, not only by the city staff, but also by the aldermen, by the neighborhood groups who have provided much feedback of what they don't and what they do want. So this is an overall great overlay and Jonathan did did a great job in going into detail as to what this is. Thank you.
Thank you, Terrell. We appreciate that.
Couple of things to add is
Real quick, Don, before we do, if you're going to make a public comment, if you want to speak, please put your name in the chat so that there at that point or use your your reaction to raise your hand and we'll call at that appropriate time. Go ahead, Don.
Just a reminder, Terrell made it, this is an overlay district. It is used in commercial areas. We do have, and you saw Jonathan both identify conditions and problems and that there's been plans fairly recently that this as a zoning tool gets to be an aid to implementing those plans with the combined dicing, slicing and massaging to get neighborhood input into formulating it. You will also understand that part of the reason to do this is our zoning code is old. Everybody can have the joy of understanding that a motor fuel pumping station sounds a little old. It does generally translate just to a gas station or changes in fuels, but ironic that that yes, it's a new tool. It's an overlay tool. It does what Terrell says in general. It does what Jonathan laid out in detail. And once enacted, it means that the zoning staff will carefully be monitoring and administering all this and great kudos to that task yet ahead. And Chairman, you're welcome to invite Alderman Cone, who represents this area, to make some comments. And then, of course, there's the public comment period as an open public hearing before we take a vote.
Thank you. So Alderman Cone. You're still muted if you're speaking.
Thank you. Yeah. So this has been a very long arduous effort to get to this point. You know, I think I I sent my first request over to Don to, you know, work on the development of a said a special use district back in maybe twenty ten. Don, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's right. So, you know, twelve years in the making here. You know, but we finally got, you know, some great neighbors and neighborhood organizations involved in this process. So, you know, I definitely want to acknowledge which has already been acknowledged. But Dutch Town South Community Corporation, Anissa McCaskill and Dutch Town Main Streets with Nate Lindsay. They've both been very instrumental in getting us to where we are today. You know, I also want to acknowledge the contributions of the city staff. Jonathan, you've been fantastic to work with and you know, certainly put in a yeoman's effort in terms of time and energy to, you know, the planning process here. And then, you know, Terrell, I thank you as well for your part from the zoning perspective along with, you know, Mary Hart Burton and and Don. You know, this has just been a really awesome process to experience with my neighbors, getting their input and to, you know, what they would like to see neighborhood and certainly within these neighborhood commercial corridors along Grand Merrimack and Virginia. And and an honor to be able to work with and can't wait to continue this process through the Board of Aldermen. So thank you so much for the presentation this evening as well, Jonathan, and you know, look forward to continuing this effort.
Thank you, Alderman Cone. During the public hearing, I will recognize at this point Nate Lindsay and also Anissa McCaskill. I call for a motion to open public hearing at this time.
So moved, Alderman Cone.
Second, Alderman, excuse me, Commissioner Boaz.
It's been moved from your mouth to God's. Moved by Commissioner Cone and seconded by Commissioner Boaz. Call for vote for opening the public hearing.
All right, Alderman Coder. We can come back.
Sorry about that. Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Commissioner Boaz.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Commissioner Goodman.
Aye.
Commissioner Pfeffer. Commissioner Pfeffer.
Aye.
All right. And Chair Stroud.
Aye.
And motion passes to all present voting yes.
Thank you very much. With that, the public hearing is now opened. I would first like to recognize Nate Lindsay. As we typically do, we hold comments to two to three minutes at most. Being respectful, everybody's time depending on those that are lined up. But Nate, I'll let you go ahead and speak first and then we'll come to Anissa McCaskill.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Nate Lindsay. I'm resident of the city of St. Louis at thirty four hundred Merrimack, which is actually within the special use districts. I'm the volunteer president of Dutch Town Main Streets. I'll be very brief. I'm speaking in support of this effort, which, as Alderman Cone said, has been a long time coming. I think with the help of neighbors, Dutch Town Main Streets volunteers and Dutch Town South Community Corporation and their stakeholders, we've been very intentional with what Jonathan has presented. Jonathan has done a fantastic job of helping us be intentional. And I think that we are doing some unique things with our special use district, but those unique things are very warranted in our neighborhood and we are hopeful that they're going to be the building blocks for a lot of future economic developments that creates equitable results for the entire neighborhood. So with that, I'll close my statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsay. I'm going to recognize Anissa in a second, and then it looks like Evan Winkler has requested to speak. So Ms. McCaskill, if you have anything to say, this would be your time.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Anissa McCaskill. I am executive director of Dutch Town South Community Corporation, which has been mentioned as one of the partners that reviewed this plan as a community stakeholder. We were brought in by Dutch Town Main Streets to provide our input. And this particular request for a special use district was presented to our Graveway Jefferson Development Review Committee prior to the publication of the public hearing. The committee members were able to provide input regarding proposed uses and restrictions in the special use district as well as ask questions of Mr. Roper. He spent probably about two to three hours going through every single use and answering questions with our committee. The Graveway Jefferson Historic Neighborhoods Plan calls for measures to provide redevelopment and infrastructure necessary to revitalize the subject area. With that, we also recognize that there are necessary things for the individuals who live within our catchment. And we see that this particular special use district request provides some of those things, but also provides the tools necessary for this revitalization and development while also maintaining the historic integrity of the neighborhood. So we do urge the commission to provide approval of this request. And I can answer any questions the committee might have.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. McCaskill.
Thank you.
With that, the next person is Mr. Winkler, Evan Winkler. I presume if you have any questions at this moment. Mr. Winkler, seeing that there's a icon of Mr. Winkler, seeing that there's a icon of.
Yeah, I'm just here observing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Just wanted to be sure to be respectful. With that, I am not seeing any other names in the comments or any other raised hands for the public hearing. With that verifying, hearing no others, I will accept a motion to close the public hearing.
So move, Bradley.
Second, Cohn.
It's been moved by Commissioner Bradley, seconded by Commissioner Cohn to close the public hearing. Call for vote.
No previous roll, all right, Alderman Coder.
Previous roll, previous roll.
Thank you. Previous roll, hearing no objections. Previous roll stands, public hearing is closed at this time. I'm a mispronounced it again, Ms. McCaskill and Anissa. She's offered to answer any questions, so I will go through the commission at this point. Alderman Coder, any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. I'm going to bypass Alderman Cohn to decide for questions. I think we know why. Commissioner Boaz, any questions?
I just was wondering a little bit about the, for the boundaries of the CID and the SUD do not match. If you could tell us a little bit about those properties.
I think Nate is probably better suited. He's the president of the Dutch Town Main Streets.
Okay, so Nate, would you respond to that?
I, I can, yes. So the Community Improvement District was an effort that our organization put forward back in 2016 before St. Louis Main Streets was a pilot program here in St. Louis. And so after doing our consulting with Missouri Main Street Connection, we actually broadened out the area that we thought was sort of the core mixed-use commercial area. And so what you see for the special use district is actually the original CID that was passed. One of the reasons why is because we've had some success. And in 2016, we actually didn't have as much activity. And so that was where we could pass the CID at the time.
You're starting to break.
More activity in other areas now that are. And I can try to give that answer a little bit more slowly. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, go ahead and try it. Yes.
Okay, so the Community Improvement District boundaries are from 2016 and were put in place based on what was the core mixed-use commercial activity that was occurring in the neighborhood at the time. The boundaries that you see for the special use district overlay are a little bit broader. And the reason for that is because Dutch Town Main Streets has actually expanded its focus area because of development that's happened in the neighborhood. And so we have some good things going on and that expanded boundary, I think, is reflective of that.
Got it. Thank you so much.
Okay. Commissioner Bradley, any questions?
No questions, just a couple of comments. Obviously, this has been a long time in the making. I, I know we have all talked about this for quite some time. And it appears to me that a tremendous amount of work went into this. So obviously, thank you to those individuals who spent their time and effort to make this a reality. Growing up in a neighborhood adjacent to this from 40 years ago and witnessing this area as a thriving community district, it's exciting to me to see an opportunity to revive this. Looking at the pictures is just saddening to me. And there are so many opportunities, so glad. And I just want to say thank you. This is a great project.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradley. Commissioner Peoples, any questions?
No questions. A great project. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Goodman, any questions or comments?
No question.
Thank you, Commissioner Goodman. Commissioner Pfeffer, any questions or comments?
No questions. Just want to echo the other commissioners' gratitude to all the community members and residents and leaders and stakeholders who worked to make this happen. It's a critical geography for the city in terms of density, in terms of concentration of young people and diversity. And looking forward to working with you all to bring the vision that we can see at the heart of this SUD to a reality over the coming years and decades.
Thank you, Commissioner Pfeffer. I do have a question. I'm not sure who's the best to answer it. There, there's a small partial that, of land that is in the middle of this space at the confluence of these three axes. Can you tell me why that's there in that, in that manner? If I missed.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, those are primarily single-family residential homes in that little area. That's the roughly the 4,200 block of Louisiana and the 3,500 block of Kingsland Court. And they're almost all, you know, single-family residential, which is why they were left out. They, there's not a lot of commercial activity in those areas.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that, Alderman Cohn. I commend all that have worked on this neighborhood. I know what, how important it is now and it will be in the future. Paying attention to the census, we know that our youth are in that neighborhood. Both organizations are doing great down there. So, and Commissioner, Commissioner Cohn, congratulations to you on this area and seeing the growth there. With that, I would ask Jonathan, if you would read the recommendation of the, of your, your recommendation, please.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. And staff finds that, staff is looking for the commission to initiate and give a favorable recommendation to the proposed special use district in Dutch Town. As we found, it has met the criteria for the establishment of an SUD per the enabling legislation. And also that the proposed special use district is in conformity with the strategic land use plan and also the adopted Grabaway-Jefferson Historics Neighborhood Plan.
Thank you very much. At that point, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
So moved.
It was moved by Commissioner Pfeffer, seconded by Commissioner Cohn. With that call for vote, please.
Previous roll.
Object, object to previous roll.
All right, Alderman Coder.
Aye.
Alderman Cohn.
Aye.
Commissioner Boaz.
Aye.
Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Commissioner Goodman.
Aye.
Commissioner Pfeffer.
Aye, and if you could put me down in the minutes as the second to Alderman Cohn's motion.
All right. Yes, got it. And Chair Strather.
Epstein.
All right. Motion passes with three, six, seven voting aye.
Thank you very much. Just for the record, it is not that I am objecting to the motion in any way. It is simply that I must abstain because of any, any concerns at all. With that, thank you. Great work for the team, Jonathan. You did a yeoman's job, as was mentioned, and to all those organizations doing work there, we appreciate you. With that, there's a couple of delegated items, and I think I'm going to turn it over to Don Rowe at this point.
So one of the things I'll do is, as Jonathan made reference to both the published packet and many things in the presentation, we need a planning process to lay the groundwork for us then to do this implementation of changing the land use regulations. Because it is a planning-driven and database and visionary process to get into the regulation. As Alderman Cohn mentioned, it's taken a while. So I am drinking to the celebration that we are done on this one. And then Alderman Cotar is next up. And there is an SUD in process for downtown. And it will follow on the downtown design plan. And unlike this particular effort where we use staff, zoning staff, our staff, volunteers and others, there's been a consultant and funding made available. And the consultant is working for Greater St. Louis, Inc. to help move and do all this heavy lifting that is needed for an SUD to help improve our area. So cheers to this one. And Jack, you're up next, but they're still working on it. And we're appreciative of the private, private sector helping get the resources to do that one.
Boy, I want to say too, though, that I am just so pleased at all the wonderful work coming out of the, out of your staff, Don, that the investment in staffing up your folks has really is, we see it paying off every time we meet. Thank you.
Wish we didn't have five vacancies, so, yes.
I know, but, but you're.
But Don, you're no special than everybody else right now.
I understand. Yep. Well, yes, we also lost a key player. So, well, we, we know that and she's doing.
I know, but you're still presenting some pretty impressive work.
With that, I'll go back. There are some delegated items. There's street vacation. And in particular, want to make a note that there's a chapter 99 that's been delegated. It is under an acre. It's on North Kings Highway. It's two properties that have just been not poorly cared for. It is a redevelopment plan that's been authored by LCRA. It's not a development behind it. It's a delegated, I've recommended and approved it. It does have, because of that condition of these two properties along Kings Highway, includes eminent domain as a possibility to sort of stimulate action by either the folks that are there or finding new players. So that's a delegated item in the chapter 99 world. And that's all I have to say tonight.
All right, Don. With that, I will open up the floor to any commissioners at this point, called before call to close. Hearing no final comments, no new business. Will we be meeting? So next scheduled meeting is July 13th, so please mark your calendar. Staff will be sending out information appropriately to that. Unfortunately, it seems like COVID still is keeping us at a bay. So I wish the families the best and safety to all of you. Happy holidays coming up, Juneteenth and both Fourth of July coming between now and then. I'll entertain a motion to close the meeting.
So move.
It's been moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second it, that the meeting be adjourned. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all for your time. And again to the staff, thank you very much for your efforts and congratulations on all your hard work.
Yes, thank you.
Good night.